Will the meeting of the RTM please come to order? Will the members please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance and please remain standing for the oath of office.
I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation, under our own, indivisible, with liberty and justice and moral order.
Will you all please raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Connecticut so long as you continue a citizen thereof, and that you will faithfully discharge according to law the duties as a member of the representative town meeting of the Town of Greenwich to the best of your abilities to help you God? Item two now comes before us. Are there any nominations for moderator? I recognize Roger Laurie, District 7.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of the RTM, town officials, guests, students, welcome. I formally place the name of Thomas J. Byrne as candidate for moderator for our next term. Tom has been moderator for the last 14 years. There is really only one major reason why we should unanimously elect Tom this evening, and that is because he has done a superb job running the RTM in these last 14 years. Each year, in my view, has gotten better. We've become more efficient, more effective, we've done combined and consent calendars, the meetings have not dragged on till 1:00 or 2:00 in the morning like many of us can recall. The meetings have been run well, in a decorous fashion. Tom has attempted to give both sides of every issue ample time, fair disclosure, and he's run them with decorum, politeness, and occasionally a bit of humor. Now, many of you may know he's from District 6. He's served as Chair of District 6 for about six years. He was elected in 87, January 88 was when he was sworn in, so he's been around a fair amount of time. He has a number of other things which I'd like to quickly mention in passing. He created a technology advisory committee. That's going to be very important in the next few years. He has encouraged many viewpoints and has tried to give a fair airing of issues. He has presided over a claims committee, which as moderator he does, which has probably saved the town several hundreds of thousands of dollars by rejecting settlements and forcing better settlements for our town. Very important service that he's rendered as moderator and as Chair of the Claims Committee. He oversaw the 75th anniversary celebration, which was fun and enjoyed by all of us. And, he's met the challenge that was posed by Jim Lash's Charter Revision Committee. We have elected, we have had more candidates run for the RTM in four of the last six years than we've ever had before. This is a tribute to the fact that the prestige of the RTM has risen, and in my view directly attributable to the moderators' efforts on our behalf. So having said all this, I hope we unanimously elect Tom Byrne as our next moderator. Thank you.
Are there any other nominations? I move that nominations be closed. Is there a second? Will the district chairs please have their cards marked? Please remind any member that comes in late they have to be sworn in before they can vote tonight, so if they just would come up front, we could swear them in later. I thought you were on the new chairs of committees. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Connecticut so long as you continue a citizen thereof, and that you will faithfully discharge according to law the duties as a member of the representative town meeting of the Town of Greenwich to the best of your abilities up here? Congratulations. (inaudible) I'd like to make one short announcement. If anyone has parked their car blocking an exit, we are asking you to please go now and move your car to a proper parking space. Thank you. The vote on item two is 185-2-7. Congratulations to Tom Byrne, our moderator once again.
What a great job. Let's hear it for Karen Budkins for conducting a wonderful election. Well, I want to thank you very much for the trust that you place in me by electing me to this position. I want to assure you that I do not take that trust for granted. I also want to pledge to you that I will invest all of my energies and abilities to do the best job possible and to make this institution even better. Two, two things that I do want to mention about our upcoming term. As you know, our special committee made some informal recommendations that were not to take the form of a rule, and one of those was to invigorate our technology advisory group, as you heard Roger allude to. We, we have had such a group over the years. There, I am going to take up that recommendation and ask for any volunteers who are interested in helping us use technology to assist us in our work. There are two items at the top of the list I would like that group to tackle. The first being improving the user friendliness of this new Town of Greenwich email account system that everyone now should be on notice of. And I know there are many concerns about whether it is user friendly, and I know we have the talent here who can make it that way, so that if you want to use it, it can be used more easily than it appears exists right now. The other issue, of course, is our town website. I think we all agree that that can serve us a little better than it does at present. And, you know, any other number of ideas that you may have, feel free to contact me, but please let me know if you're interested in serving in this effort, because I think there is a lot we can do on the technology front. The other, the other initiative, of course, that falls within the responsibilities of the moderator is to assist our leadership in doing the work of the RTM and helping them conduct their meetings and answering any questions they might have. I, we will very shortly meet our new leadership, both district and committee leaders, and I'd like to alert them that I will be calling a meeting with them in the next four to six weeks. So with that said, let's get on with the very important business that faces us in the next two years. The, the next item on our agenda is the election of a moderator pro tem. I open the nominations for that position. John Harkins, District 6.
Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM, selectmen, and other distinguished guests and visitors, I place into nomination the name of Paul Curtis for the position of moderator pro tempore. Paul has established a long and distinguished record of service to us and to the wider community. He has served on the Finance, Budget Overview Committee, and Town Services, with distinction as a participant and a leader. Many of us seek his knowledge of the history of the RTM and town operations. More than just being accurate, Paul is accessible and responsive in person, by email, phone, fax, at virtually any time of the day. His contributions build on his wide-ranging skills in participating and leading. Today, thanks to Paul, we have a team that runs Channel 79. Paul's unrivaled ability to assess the needs of our membership and to recommend services, most notably that public access TV service, gives each of us, RTM members, taxpayers, and officials, even more opportunities to be informed and to share our work among ourselves and the wider community. When he put our work on the Internet, he made it possible even for those on vacation to keep up with us. Paul's foresighted motion two years ago to create an electronic bulletin board was adopted by an equally foresighted RTM. 173-0-0. This may be a record. Paul Curtis's record of attendance at meetings cannot be rivaled easily. Over his past 10 years of service, he has been absent not at all. Paul is as capable as they come, his dedication is unrivaled. As moderator pro tem, Paul will serve each of us and the entire town. I ask you for his vote.
Further nominations for the position of moderator pro tem. Ed Diddakis, District 1.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM. First, let me extend my congratulations to all of you on your election to the RTM. This is going to be an important term for us, as the citizens of Greenwich are more insistent than ever that we run their government responsibly with quality services, yet spending their tax dollars judiciously. That requires RTM leadership, and is why Joan Caldwell is a perfect moderator pro tem. Joan is an experienced citizen legislator, a longtime delegate from District 10. She has seen it all and always acted to keep Greenwich the premier community that it is. You know, each time she walks up to this podium to give us a report, I put my reading material down. I sit a little higher in my seat, and I listen carefully to her analysis. She identifies the pertinent issues, presents them succinctly, and provides important advice and guidance to this body. Joan is fully committed to the RTM. She understands its critical role to provide citizen input in running Greenwich, as an end as an access point to government for our neighbors. As the incumbent moderator pro tem, she has been a true partner with our current moderator, and earned the respect of our town leaders. She has enthusiastically served on more than a dozen RTM special committees. They've been as diverse as the Committee to Study the Effect of Pension Colas, say that three times fast. Later, along with the BET, she studied the value of the Greenwich Pay Plan. She's been on special committees on the RT, RTM Rules and Procedures, not once but twice, and the 50th Anniversary Committee, just to name a few. The RTM is better today because of Joan's leadership. Leadership, experience, commitment, those are the traits we need in a moderator pro tem. Leadership, experience, commitment, those are the traits that Joan Caldwell brings to each and every RTM meeting. Mr. Moderator, I nominate Joan Caldwell for moderator pro tem.
Thank you. Any further nominations for moderator pro tem? At this point, I will close the nominations, and we will now hear from the candidates. Paul Curtis?
Members of the RTM, I'll be very short and brief. There is one question that was asked of me several times that I want to get answered right up front. My involvement with Channel 79, as you know, has been occupying my time here at the RTM meetings for the last five years, and as Mr. Harkins stated, we have built a team now that operates Channel 79 and the coverage of the RTM meetings with me, and now are fully capable of doing it. So our coverage of this meeting will continue whether I am elected or not. I only want to outline four things, very quickly. The four jobs that the moderator pro tem has. Moderator pro tem has four basic responsibilities, one of which is to stand in the stead of the moderator in case he's absent. However, in my 10 years on the RTM, Mr. Byrne has never been absent, that I recall. So, I, moderator pro tem has not had to do that. The second responsibility that the moderator pro tem has is to assist the moderator in working with the district chairman and committee chairman in orientation and running and operating their committees. Those are very important responsibilities, but the next two are actually even more important to the members of the body itself. The first one is, it is the responsibility of the moderator pro tem to ensure that the explanatory notes and all of the memoranda and additional materials that travel to each and every member of the RTM with the call are accurate, forthcoming, descriptive, and have all the information that the members need to do their job and to make judicious decisions. In my mind, that is probably the premier responsibility for a moderator pro tem. The other responsibility that the moderator pro tem has is to make sure that the public bulletin board, and when the rules were written, that was the main means of notifying the membership of meetings and activities of the RTM, is kept up to date. Those two responsibilities are key for this body to operate well. If you do not have accurate information and you do not know when the meetings are, how can we actually make good decisions? These are things that I really am very, very, are very important to me. They require looking at it, and as Mr. Byrne said, technology is one mechanism to do that, but also to engage the actual district chairman and committee chairman on how best to convey their information back to the membership at large. We have many business people in this body. We have many people who expect agendas and who go to meetings and operate businesses, also chair meetings in their own companies. We, as a body of 230 people, should be able to operate as well as any company, but to do that, we need to have information that's up to date and accurate in front of us. To close, there was a quote that was attributed to Thomas Jefferson, and he said that "information is the currency of democracy." And as it turns out, it's not actually Mr. Jefferson who said it, but someone even more notable to us in our times, and that was Ralph Nader. Absolutely, information is the currency of democracy. Without information, without up-to-date knowledge, we cannot make good decisions on behalf of our citizens. Thank you.
Joan Caldwell.
Mr. Moderator, members of town meeting. I have looked for a definition of moderator pro tem, and I looked in the Charter and in Robert's Rules and in the Rules of the RTM, and a job description, as I think of a job description, very detailed, elaborate, doesn't exist. It simply says, and you have to almost go to Webster's, that the moderator pro tem is the moderator for the moment, and that's exactly what we're electing tonight, what we should be most concerned about. Mr. Byrne's has an outstanding record of attendance, but were he not here, the moderator pro tem has to be ready at an instant to go up there and to pick up the call and move it forward, wherever we are in the call. Now, contrary to what you've just heard, that has happened a couple of times during the time I've been pro tem, and I guarantee you, I had no notice. The first notice I had was the sound of the moderator's voice asking me to come forward. And so I had to go there and pick up the call and direct the meeting until he was ready to come back and take up the gavel. In order to do that, you have to be comfortable, you have to know the call, you have to be comfortable with Robert's Rules, and most importantly, you have to be comfortable dealing with a large group of people who most of the time do not agree with each other, and so you need to keep the meeting moving forward in an orderly direction. I think I've done that, and you've seen me do it, and you know I can do it. You've seen me chair this meeting, as well as combined meetings. (inaudible).
Fairtown, I ask you for his vote. Further nominations for the position of moderator pro tem. Ed Diddakis, District One.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM. First, let me extend my congratulations to all of you on your election to the RTM. This is going to be an important term for us, as the citizens of Greenwich are more insistent than ever that we run their government responsibly with quality services, yet spending their tax dollars judiciously. That requires RTM leadership and is why Joan Caldwell is a perfect moderator pro tem. Joan is an experienced citizen legislator, a longtime delegate from District Ten. She has seen it all and always acted to keep Greenwich the premier community that it is. You know, each time she walks up to this podium to give us a report, I put my reading material down.[81.11][81.11](Laughter). I sit a little higher in my seat and I listen carefully to her analysis. She identifies the pertinent issues, presents them succinctly, and provides important advice and guidance to this body. Joan is fully committed to the RTM. She understands its critical role to provide citizen input in running Greenwich and as an access point to government for our neighbors. As the incumbent moderator pro tem, she has been a true partner with our current moderator and earned the respect of our town leaders. She has enthusiastically served on more than a dozen RTM special committees. They've been as diverse as the Committee to Study the Effect of Pension Colas. Say that three times fast. Later, along with the BET, she's studied the value of the Greenwich Pay Plan. She's been on special committees on the RTM Rules and Procedures, not once but twice, and the 50th Anniversary Committee, just to name a few. The RTM is better today because of Joan's leadership. Leadership, experience, commitment, those are the traits we need in a moderator pro tem. Leadership, experience, commitment, those are the traits that Joan Caldwell brings to each and every RTM meeting. Mr. Moderator, I nominate Joan Caldwell for moderator pro tem.
Thank you. Any further nominations for moderator pro tem? At this point, I will close the nominations and we will now hear from the candidates. Paul Curtis.
Members of the RTM, I'll be very short and brief. There is one question that was asked of me several times that I want to get answered right up front. My involvement with Channel 79, as you know, has been occupying my time here at the RTM meetings for the last five years. And as Mr. Harkins stated, we have built a team now that operates Channel 79 and the coverage of the RTM meetings with me and now are fully capable of doing it. So our coverage of this meeting will continue whether I am elected or not. I only want to outline four things very quickly. The four jobs that the moderator pro tem has. Moderator pro tem has four basic responsibilities, one of which is to stand instead of the moderator in case he's absent. However, in my 10 years on the RTM, Mr. Byrne has never been absent, that I recall. So moderator pro tem has not had to do that. The second responsibility that the moderator pro tem has is to assist the moderator in working with the district chairman and committee chairman in orientation and running and operating their committees. Those are very important responsibilities, but the next two are actually even more important to the members of the body itself. The first one is, it is the responsibility of the moderator pro tem to ensure that the explanatory notes and all of the memoranda and additional materials that travel to each and every member of the RTM with the call are accurate, forthcoming, descriptive, and have all the information that the members need to do their job and to make judicious decisions. In my mind, that is probably the premier responsibility for a moderator pro tem. The other responsibility that the moderator pro tem has is to make sure that the public bulletin board, and when the rules were written, that was the main means of notifying the membership of meetings and activities of the RTM, is kept up to date. Those two responsibilities are key for this body to operate well. If you do not have accurate information and you do not know when the meetings are, how can we actually make good decisions? These are things that I really am very, very, are very important to me. They require looking at it, and as Mr. Byrne said, technology is one mechanism to do that, but also to engage the actual district chairman and committee chairman on how best to convey their information back to the membership at large. We have many business people in this body. We have many people who expect agendas and who go to meetings and operate businesses, also chair meetings in their own companies. We, as a body of 230 people, should be able to operate as well as any company. But to do that, we need to have information that's up to date and accurate in front of us. To close, there was a quote that was attributed to Thomas Jefferson, and he said that "information is the currency of democracy." And as it turns out, it's not actually Mr. Jefferson who said it, but someone even more notable to us in our times, and that was Ralph Nader. Absolutely, information is the currency of democracy. Without information, without up-to-date knowledge, we cannot make good decisions on behalf of our citizens. Thank you.[456.13][456.13](Applause).
Joan Caldwell.
Mr. Moderator, members of town meeting. I have looked for a definition of moderator pro tem, and I looked in the Charter and in Robert's Rules and in the Rules of the RTM, and a job description, as I think of a job description, very detailed, elaborate, doesn't exist. It simply says, and you have to almost go to Webster's, that the moderator pro tem is the moderator for the moment. And that's exactly what we're electing tonight, what we should be most concerned about. Mr. Burns has an outstanding record of attendance, but were he not here, the moderator pro tem has to be ready at an instant to go up there and to pick up the call and move it forward, wherever we are in the call. Now, contrary to what you've just heard, that has happened a couple of times during the time I've been pro tem, and I guarantee you, I had no notice. The first notice I had was the sound of the moderator's voice asking me to come forward. And so I had to go there and pick up the call and direct the meeting until he was ready to come back and take up the gavel. In order to do that, you have to be comfortable, you have to know the call, you have to be comfortable with Robert's Rules. And most importantly, you have to be comfortable dealing with a large group of people who most of the time do not agree with each other. And so you need to keep the meeting moving forward in an orderly direction. I think I've done that, and you've seen me do it, and you know I can do it. You've seen me chair this meeting, as well as combined meetings, as well as a public hearing for the Health Department, and I can't begin to elaborate. It's a long career of having been a leader, a chairman. The one thing I can say to you is that my view of being a moderator pro tem means that I must work and do with the moderator whatever, whenever, however he asks me. I am part of a team, team to carry the work of this body forward. When Dave Tobin, Judge Tobin, was moderator of this body some years ago, he had for a short while Everett Smith as moderator pro tem. I knew Everett very well because he was a member of my district, and Everett occasionally would call me and we would talk about various things. And frequently, he lamented to me that the job of moderator pro tem is a do-nothing job, and you could almost hear the scorn drip. When I became moderator pro tem, I remembered that, and I said, Everett, you and I are two different people. I believe a job is what you make of it. And so I determined then to work not only with the moderator, but with the department heads, with the first selectmen, with the committee chairs of the individual members, to be a liaison, to be alert for anything that needed to be done to help this body do its job better. And I think I've succeeded. There are some things that I have been able to do which I think have helped. I have arranged rooms for some of the committees who have had difficult room spaces. I've arranged rooms for the combined meetings, which you've never had before, and you've never could get a room last minute. I've worked on the Town Directory for the League of Women Voters, so that it has now become a pretty elaborate publication and has an awful lot of information it didn't have when I was first elected to this job. I don't say that I take credit for that, it's just that I helped them get it. There are other things that can be done and should be done. When I first came to you as moderator pro tem, I met with the town, in the town clerk's office with Dee Melengard, and went over the call. In those days, the call came in in dribs and drabs because it was manually done, and I went over the explanatory comments and frequently contacted department chairs or department supervisors and said, "Look, this item needs more information." And changes were made, and the explanatory comments did improve. We're now mechanized. Those calls, those items come in very close to the deadline. There is not the latitude of time that we had then. Does that mean that there cannot be better explanatory comments? No, but it means we have to work with the department heads. They're the ones that write the comments. We do not. In the time I've been moderator pro tem, I have frequently served as a stand-in for the moderator when there have been strategy or planning sessions that he could not attend because he had a job. The one that comes readily to mind, the Hamilton Avenue Schools, when we had several interim appropriations.
You can have full credit for that.[822.23][822.23](Laughter).
No, thank you, I don't want that. In short, I like the job. I think I do a good job. I think I've done a good job, and I'd like to continue. And so I ask for your support. And while I'm here, since I have your attention, I would like to make an announcement and sincerely hope it will not bring the roof in on us, but I will get a town email now that the town has an email system.[854.73][854.73](Laughter).
All right. Thank you, thank you very much, both candidates. Will the district chairs please use, yes, Mr. Goss?
We'll use those, they're so mistaken, every card is the same, just say, who goes in column one?
I'm about to give instructions on marking. We're going to use those pink cards. Those are the only election cards, correct?
Yellow.
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 They're yellow, okay. Let's list the candidates in alphabetical order. So in the first column, Joan Caldwell. In the second column, Paul Curtis. And you vote accordingly. All right. So, please proceed to poll your delegation, and we will await the outcome. Actually, should we continue with our introduction of the leadership, the RTM? Why don't we do that? While we are voting, I would ask, let's do the district chairs to come up, please, and introduce yourselves, your vice chair and your secretary. And I ask all the district chairs to please come up, and let's proceed in numerical order, beginning with Dean Goss, Chair of District One.
Hi, in District, ooh. In District One, I got re-elected chairman this time, and Carl Carlson is our vice chairman, and Carol Zerilli is our secretary. The only other thing I'd like to point out of our 18 members, six are new to the system this year, five are new to the RTM, and one is a returning member.
And let me just remind, if there were any new members, if there were any members who came in and have not yet been sworn in, please come forward and we will do that. District Two.
My name is Suzanne Geisrobbins, and I am chairman of District Two. I was re-elected. And our vice chair is Wilma Nasenovic, and our secretary is Jill Oberlander. District Two has 14 enthusiastic, experienced, and very capable members, each of whom has been an incumbent who has been re-elected as a member of the RTM at least once, and we are very proud of them.
Hi, I'm Tom Canilius, District Three Chairman. Our vice chairman is Michael Aurelia. Our secretary is Louise Bavis. We have two new members this year, Dan Brooks and Robert Allen. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Bob McKnight. I've been re-elected chair of District Four. Our vice chair is Tom Greco. Our secretary is Suma Cave, and we welcome three new members, Sam Tam, John Hartwell, and Jeff Doty.
I'm Mary Ferry. I was re-elected chairman of District Five. Laura Erickson is our new vice chairman, and Bob Brady is our new secretary.
My name is Colleen Jenkins. I'm chair of District Six. Our vice chair is Karen Sadekhan, and our secretary is Stephen Meskers.
I'm Valerie Stauffer. I'm returning as chair of District Seven. Roger Lurie will continue as vice chair. We have a new secretary, Linda Bruno. We have five new members, one of whom Ralph McDermott has returned after a little vacation from us, Bill Galvin. We have Rebecca Breed, who served as first selectman, John Dolan, and Peg Freiberg. So we are a very enthusiastic group.
Jim Butel, District Eight, returning as chairman. Josh Brown returns as our vice chairman. At our organizational meeting, we elected Chris Von Keisling as the secretary, but at our meeting last week, we ousted him, and we replaced him with Jen Dansi, a new member. We have six new members and one returning member to our group. We lost two valuable members in the last election, but gained a selectman and a tax collector. Thank you.
I'm Betsy Fruman, and I happily am chair of District Nine again this year. We elected Vince DiMarco as our vice chair and Steve Warozawa as our secretary. We have two and a half new members. The half a new member was elected for the last meeting of the last term, so he's only halfway new, and that's Jonathan Rosenberg. And our two new members are Robert Lichtenfeld and Craig Holes.
I'm Joan Caldwell, chairman of District Ten. I tried very hard to give the job away, but no one would take it. Our vice chair is Jerry Anderson, and our secretary is Erica Hoffman-Purnell.
I'm Disfina Faciliotis, chairman of District Eleven. Todd Kennedy decided he wasn't going to run again, so I was chosen. I'm very lucky to have Richard Newman as my vice chairman and Rosalind Castro as my secretary. We have, we filled all our seats. As you know, we were in the newspaper for not having filled seats, but we have filled all 24 seats. We have seven new members, and they're really adding a lot to our district. They're enthusiastic, and they've got loads and loads of ideas, and I'm having quite a time trying to get these ideas across. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Bob May, chairman of District Twelve. Our vice chairman is Barbara Hinman, and our secretary is Miriam Menon. I'd like to welcome seven new members to our district. They are Glenn Kaner, Nick Gupta, Robert Liflender, Ed Mangiallo, Rob Perlemanetti, Greg Schulte, and Don Wyko.
All right, thank you very much. At this time, I invite our committee chairs to please come down and introduce your leadership, and proceed in whatever order you would like, beginning with Doug Wells, Chair of our Legislative and Rules Committee.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, I was re-elected as chairman of Legislative and Rules Committee. Francis Bergweger from District Eight was re-elected as vice chair. We have a new secretary, who is also a new member to our committee, Donald Hamilton. Also, three new members to our committee, Mary George, Daniel Brooks, and Neil Bulger.
I'm Karen Sadekhan. I was re-elected as chair of the Parks and Rec Committee. Our vice chair is from District Seven, Lucia Jensen, and our secretary is Nancy Chapin from District Eight. We have four new members, Fred Feldman from District One, Danny Ferniez from District Five, Mark Johnson from District Eleven, and Greg Schulte from District Twelve.
I'm Bill Drake. I was elected the chairman of the Budget Overview Committee, and our vice chairman is Steve Warozawa, and our secretary is, again, Christine Edwards. Thanks.
Good evening. My name is Rick Crowell from District Eight. I was elected the chairman of the Public Works Subcommittee. Joining me for the next term as vice chair will be Bob Cavie from District Twelve and Linda Bruno as our secretary from District Seven. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Best wishes on the new term. I'm Chris Von Keisling from District Eight. My committee wishes me make a fuller report to you than I have in the past, so I have a long version or a short one.[1426.15][1426.15](Laughter) I'll show a hands. We wish to commend, first of all, in our meeting, we had two meetings, we had to meet for two meetings on this election, and I wish to commend Alice Duff for her extraordinary and able service to the committee as a presiding officer during the elections. It was of great help. And Jerry Anderson of District Ten, our member, who was helpful with her as the teller, et cetera. We had some sticky procedural questions, and I would like to thank those who helped solve them, especially the moderator for his assistance. The Appointments Committee elected myself, Chris Von Keisling, as chairman, after all said and done, and the most gracious Lucy Krasner as vice chairman, who withdrew from the contest as chairman, and Janet DeLuca of District Eleven, who's a new member, as secretary. I would like to take just a quick moment here. The Appointments Committee is charged with nominating RTM members of the Labor Contracts Committee, Claims Committee, the Condomination Commission, and two seats this year for the Flood and Erosion Control Board. All of these nominees must be members of the RTM, current RTM, except for the Flood and Erosion Control Commission. We will receive candidates and their resumes through next Monday, the 23rd, so please get in any names, anybody who's wishing to, we already have some people who put themselves forward, including the incumbents. We need to hear from incumbents whether they wish to continue. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Karen Faciliotis, and I was elected chair of the Health and Human Services Committee. My vice chair is Alexis Vulgaris, and the secretary is an alternate from District Three, Daniel Brooks. We have three new members this year to our committee, Dean Goss from District One, Samar Pana-Tom from District Four, and Laura Erickson from District Five, and we're looking forward to a great two years.
Good evening. I'm Peter Berg from District Eight, and I was elected chairman of the Land Use Committee. Our vice chairman is Michael Carter from District Six, and our secretary returning is Mark Schroeder from District Two. We have eight returning regular members, including Franklin Blumer, who has been our chair for many years, and we have, and four alternates advanced to become regular members. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Gordon Ennis from District Eight, newly elected chairman of the Finance Committee. Irv Porter was elected vice chairman. Angela Highland was elected secretary. We have four new members, Robert Maddox from District Eleven, John Rosenberg from District Nine, Angela Highland is new from District Seven, and Robert Allen from District Three. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Evan Delman, District Nine, Chair of Town Services. Vice chair is Greg Frum, District One, and our secretary is Carlo Cantavero from District Two.
Vince DiMarco, I'm honored to be back as chair of the Transportation Committee once again. Paul Settlemeyer was elected secretary, and Ellen Galvin, Elvin, Ellen Brennan-Galvin, excuse me, I got it right, is our new vice chair. We have five new members. District Three, Tom Canilius. District Four, Stephen Bezuto. District Six, Walter Howe, and District Eight, Steven Rubin, and District Eleven, Mary Waldron. This enthusiastic group is going to be bringing forward a recommended new charter for the Transportation Committee next month, or next term, excuse me, next call.
All right. Thank you all very much. Congratulations on your election as district and committee leaders. All right. I do have the results of the vote on the election of our moderator pro tem. Joan Caldwell, 100. Paul Curtis, 99. Abstaining, 1. Joan Caldwell, congratulations. All right. Continuing with the business of the meeting, as all members have received a copy of the call for tonight, tonight's meeting, the reading of the call will be omitted. Are there any, and as all members have received a copy of the minutes of our December 14, 2009, meeting, the reading of those minutes will be omitted. Are there any proposed changes to the draft minutes? Bill Clark, District Four.
There are some changes for the moderator. Page one, just above the bold paragraph with Michael Chambers, Director of Inland Wetlands. Every other time you refer to it as the Inland Wetlands, it's a little bit vague.
All right, I think that's sufficient, of inland wetlands and watercourses. Anything else? Pardon? Yep. Where? All right. Is there any objection to that? Hearing none, that may be adopted upon unanimous consent. All right. That brings the first of our call items regarding approvals from the RTM before us. This is item number four. May we have the resolution on that item? the RTM before us. This is item number four. May we have the resolution on that item? Alan Corey, I'm sorry, that was postponed from our December meeting, so that now is currently before us. We do not need that to be presented. So let us get, this is a resolution to approve $18,000 regarding expenditures for the parking area at Greenwich Plaza. May we have the committee reports on item number four, beginning with Rick Crowell, Chair of our Public Works Committee?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, fellow members and guests. The Public Works Subcommittee met last Monday evening to take up item number four in the call. The item, as the moderator mentioned, was postponed from our previous meeting. Mr. Alan Corey, Director of the Town's Parking Services Department, joined us for the meeting and briefed us on the item and some additional information that had come after questions were posed at the last meeting. As provided in the, for in the lease agreement with this property, the first floor of the parking garage is the town's responsibility to maintain. The town collects $488 for roughly 770 annual permits that are sold for parking privileges in the garage. Total revenue annually is about $375,000, of which the town pays back to the tenant on the property 46% of the gross revenue, or approximately $175,000, leaving the town a gross revenue of about $200,000. The last improvements made to this parking facility were completed in 2000, almost 10 years ago. The improvements ironically made at that time were to upgrade the existing lighting fixtures. The town paid for the entire improvement. At that time, there was no shared expense with the current tenant. The cost of electricity for this area is shared between the tenant and the town. The new fixtures that are being proposed for the garage are energy-saving fluorescent fixtures that will enable the town to be eligible for rebates from the power company. They are new fixtures. They are not replacing any existing fixtures that will be placed along the back wall of the parking garage. When the existing lighting scheme had been designed, the lights were placed along the drive aisles, and the back wall, even during daylight operating hours, in those areas of those parking spaces, remains dark. And many of the patrons that use the garage feel unsafe in those areas, and they have been the parking spaces that have been subject to the vandalism and thefts that have occurred in the garage. The current lease, as it exists, is a 70-year term that will expire in the year 2037. The lease also includes an option for an additional 20 years past that, or roughly 47 years from now, until the lease would expire. It was the opinion of the committee at the time that the lease would extend far longer than the new light fixtures' life expectancy would be in this capital improvement. LED lighting was considered, but it was determined that the cost was far too expensive for this application. Mr. Corey also represented to the committee that he has had excellent experience in other garages in other cities where he has worked in the past few years, and installing lights to deter theft and vandalism in these dark areas, particularly since a number of the incidents in this lot occurred during daylight hours. The Explanos did also mention that there is a pending capital request coming in the next budget cycle for $105,000. That $105,000 is to replace, or $25,000 of that 105, is to replace the existing lighting fixtures, which are basically outdated, with new fluorescent fixtures that would be energy-saving and afford the town the same rebates that we would get with these new fixtures. $5,000 to upgrade some of the wiring and make some repairs to the electrical system in the garage, and an additional $70,000, or $75,000 for the fencing that would secure the outer perimeters of the parking garage. However, these improvements are not contingent upon the current request for the $18,000 to put in the new fixtures. This would be additional, too, and Mr. Corey had felt that it was important that we know that there are other remedies coming to make this lot more secure and safe for the people that we sell the permits to, and that this request should stand on its own merits and not be reflective of the CIP request that we'll see in the budget cycle. There has also been some additional conversations with the landlord that further improvements could be made to the lot to include operating gates at the entrance and exits, and potentially cameras in those same areas to improve even further the security of the lot. However, at this stage, those are just, that they're only talks. There is no plan or any sort of request that has been put in front of us, nor is there any agreement with the current tenant at this time to make those improvements. Mr. Corey has represented that he is going to work diligently with the tenant to try and come up with a plan, once he's sure that the next step, which would be the CIP request in the next budget cycle, is put through. The committee felt that the need was justified, and the cost for the improvements was reasonable, and we voted 12-0-0 to accept this item. Thank you.
Thank you. And with the report of our Finance Committee, Gordon Ennis, its Chairman.
Thank you. The Finance Committee met with Mr. Alan Corey last Monday night, and the vote was 10-2-0. District 2 and District 8 voted against the item. Principally, the votes were, reflected a sentiment that the overall plan was incomplete, that the information presented to the committee was insufficient for us to make a decision, and we were troubled by that. Several members also echoed, echoed that they would have probably voted against it if they had had more time. What swayed the committee essentially was the idea that we're on notice that the parking lot may be hazardous because of insufficient lighting, and that notice places a liability on the town, and we acknowledge that. We also acknowledge that there is sufficient money to eliminate the property now, and we should probably do that. In the future, however, we'd want to see more information about the lease and understand the town's obligations under that lease a little better. But as it stands now, the committee recommends a vote in favor of this item.
Evan Delman with the report of our Town Services Committee.
Town Services met again with Mr. Corey last Tuesday, and we focused on our two main points that we had last month. One was the LED lighting, and although they're more expensive through the CLMP and other government programs, people thought we could get them cheaper than what's stated on the web. Mr. Corey said the fluorescent lights are the industry standard nationwide, and he stands behind that. The other main item we had was the way this came before us. Members wanted to see it in the CIP plan, not in interim appropriation. Mr. Corey said for safety reasons, it needed to be done sooner rather than later, and again, since we were put on notice, there's a problem. The committee felt that it had to go forward. We voted 9-2-0. The two no-votes again wanted it brought before us on the CIP, not interim.
And Vin DiMarco with the report of our Transportation Committee.
Transportation Committee made a motion and unanimously passed it to take up item four at our meeting. Following a reiteration and discussion of points made in December, the vote was 8 to 3, with District 11 absent. Those against the item would have been more comfortable with an understanding of the long-term plan for this parking facility and how well it supports the transportation mode. A feeling shared by the committee as a whole. The District 1 delegate additionally felt that this expenditure may have been created simply to take advantage of unspent money, and would rather have seen the installation of surveillance cameras ahead of the lighting upgrade.
All right, I understand we do have districts that adopted motions directed to this item. Mary Ferry, Chair of District 5.
Good evening again. District 5 heard the four committee reports, all of which voted for this project. However, it became apparent to District 5 that there were still unanswered questions at our meeting. Is it the town's responsibility to light the garage? Who pays for the electricity? Now, some of that may have been answered tonight, but we didn't know. What's the town's obligation to pay for capital improvements? How does this project fit in with 105,000 Plaza lighting and security fencing CIP proposal for the 2010-2011 budget? And also, the issue of the LED lights. District, on behalf of women, the lease has been circulated, but it was not really discussed by the various committees. This was done since our district meeting. District 5 believes that if this project is truly necessary, it should come back as part of an overall plan for the plaza. The money should be returned to the general fund. On behalf of District 5, I move to postpone item four indefinitely.
That motion to postpone indefinitely, being offered on behalf of one of our districts, does not require a second and is now currently before us. Mr. Butel, for what purpose do you rise? You want to speak to the motion or offer a motion?
Yeah, speak to the motion.
All right. I will put you on the list. Alan Corey, Director of Parking Services. What is now before us is a motion to postpone indefinitely, which, if adopted, only requires a majority. If adopted, would effectively kill this, and it would, if it comes back to us, would have to come back to us in the normal course. Mr. Corey, I believe you said you wanted to speak to this?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. A lot of the information I want to present has already been presented. Safety, lights, lighting in a facility, in a parking facility, is one of the main safety precautions in a parking garage. Adequate lighting is considered one of the most important safety and security features in a parking facility, and it would be an immediate deterrent to crime and vandalism, and would create a sense of personal safety by the user. Again, some of the information I want to present has already been presented, so I'm not going to repeat it. But economically, the immediate action to reduce the chance of personal risk, provide the sense of security, and deter vehicle vandalism, a higher level of illumination should be installed in the ground level of the Greenwich Plaza parking garage, which can be accomplished by installing the fluorescent light fixtures along the wall of the darkest section of the, of the garage, which presently has no, no lighting.
Jim Butel, District 8.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members, Mr. Moderator, as you know, because I communicated to you, District 8 was the other district that would have offered a motion, but we yielded to five on this. District 8's motion was a little more specific, that in our meeting, we discussed specifically the fact that no one, including committee members, had seen the lease. No one, to the best of our knowledge, including committee members, had seen the CIP request prior to district meetings and committee meetings. I will say upfront that we did not have the benefit of Rick Crowell at our meeting, who, you heard his report earlier, is a member of our district and an able Chairman of that committee. Following our committee meeting, I met with the town manager to discuss the motion that 8 was going to offer, requesting that we get both the CIP request and the lease. You've heard about the lease being a 75-plus-20 lease in our district. I was unaware of that, having served in this body for 24 years, never having had that lease come before us. That was actually acted on in 1967. The concern in our district, because we did not have Mr. Crowell there, was the Explanos, which are contrary to some of the items you've heard said from the podium this evening. Mr. Crowell reported that no deal had been cut with Ashworth, Inc., but the Explanos state that a deal has been cut. Agreed-to-partner is the term that's used in the Explanos. Now, the previous speaker just cited the need for safety as why we need to act on this item this evening. We've been told this is separate from what's in the CIP request, but I have a copy of the CIP request, which was provided also to the members of District 5 prior to the meeting, and in the CIP request for next year, which is entirely separate lighting, the same justification is used. And I quote from the statement of need, "These upgrades are needed to prevent crime and vandalism of the vehicles parked in this facility. The lighting levels are low and substandard," blah, 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 the same justification we're hearing tonight. So if there's such urgency to install the $17,000 worth of lights tonight, why not the whole project tonight? You know, I, it, maybe this is just the way it works, that you keep citing safety and the potential of a lawsuit to get stuff passed in this town. But if it's good for one justification, you know, either we're solving the problem tonight or we're not. So if we're still at threat of lawsuit, because based on the CIP request, which is different lighting, we're still having substandard, unsafe lighting in the facility, I don't get the justification for the urgency tonight. Thank you.
Further discussion on the District 5 motion to postpone indefinitely. Yes, Mr. Crowell, to be followed by Mr. Bonney.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I rise this evening to ask you to turn down this motion to postpone indefinitely. I think what I tried to represent in the report is what Mr. Corey is trying to do with this project, and that is to phase in the different levels of safety that are needed to improve this town asset. And that's what we really have to recognize here. This is a town asset that produces revenue for the town. We need to maintain this structure, maintain the facility, so that we can justify not only the rates that we're now charging, but as discussed in our committee, potentially down the road, once all of these improvements are made, the ability to raise the rates at the lot and generate additional revenue for the town. So we have to look at this as an asset. The item that is before you this evening is to improve the lot by adding additional light fixtures to the back wall. Any of you that have been in that lot know that the very back wall is a dark corner. It's, there's no windows, there's no openings, there's no entrances or exits on that wall. The parking spaces in there are dark all day long, even on the brightest day with sunlight. So this improvement is to rectify that one situation. The CIP requests that will be coming before us in the budget cycle are further improvements to the garage, because there, it has been identified as a problem area. The lighting fixtures would be upgraded to the fluorescents, similar to the ones that are in this request, so that they would be energy-efficient and afford the town the rebates that would be provided by the power company. The fencing that would be completed on the first level, the town's level, would be similar to what Ashforth or the Greenwich Parking Plaza, Inc., has already done to the upper levels of the parking garage for their own safety, for their tenants. So in the Explanos, it does say that fencing was part of it, but it's because the town would need to continue the fencing on the lower structure as its responsibility. And that's what's in the CIP, is for those upgrades to the lighting to bring them consistent with tonight's request, and to finish the fencing that's already been done by Ashforth, because they saw the need to increase the security in this facility. What's going on now are discussions between Mr. Corey and the tenant to potentially put in the gates and the cameras. I believe Ashforth has agreed to help the town. What they have not agreed to is to what level and what the cost would be. I think there's a lot of other things that would also have to be considered, as we discussed in our committee, as to how the gates would operate. Would they be open in the evening so that folks that went to use the movie theaters, for example, could enjoy the parking lot and not have to worry about getting in and out of the access gate? How would you monitor cameras? What's the liability of the cameras? Would they be on a tape delay, or would somebody continually be facilitating them? Yes, there's a lot more questions that need to be asked on all of those levels, and I'm sure that we can address those as those items come before us in the proper manner. But what's before us tonight is a simple request to upgrade and improve one of our town assets. It's a money-making facility. It helps support the community. I think it's in our best interest to act on this this evening, put through this appropriation. It's a relatively small appropriation for a very good and worthwhile cause. Thank you.
Thank you.[1746.58][1746.58](applause) Jim Bonney, District 4, to be followed by Chris Von Keiseling.
Good evening. I, I don't often speak at the RTM, but I have a little bit of inside knowledge that might help everyone here. I've been a police officer here for over 19 years, and I've been in a patrol division for 19 years, and I worked in a central post for eight, before I was a supervisor, and I was a shift commander on midnight for many years. And everybody who works in a central post drives through the parking lot there, because we know it's dark. We know there's always people hanging out there. We had some reports on statistics of arrests that were made in the garage, but there's no statistics on the amount of people we've chased out of the back corner of the garage. Doing drugs, well, you know, using... Doing drugs, well, you know, usually there'd be arrests involved, but we suspect doing drugs, drinking alcohol, we shag a lot of people out. I don't think that it's worth $18,000 to the entire town of Greenwich for people to feel unsafe when they come home from work. They should be able to go home and feel safe and secure in a dark parking lot. And I know a lot of people have their wives and their children who commute to New York City every day, and, you know, we could squabble over whether or not we're going to pay for it now, we're going to pay for it later, but I think for such a measly amount of money, we should make it, everyone feel safe who spends the money in the town of Greenwich. And it's not cheap, almost $500 a year to park there, they should at least feel safe about it. So I've just given you my two cents, and I wasn't prepared to speak tonight, but I just figured I'd give you a little bit of inside information, and I hope you don't go with the motion to suspend it and that we vote on it today and it gets passed and we could make it safer for everyone.
Chris Von Keiseling, District Eight.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm Chris Von Keiseling, District Eight. $18,000 in the scheme of things in this town is not a lot of money, and I don't think that's what we're talking about tonight. It's money, but it's not, compared to the other things we're dealing with, it's not a lot. There is no question about the need. I think that's been well documented. Sergeant Bonney said it better than any of us and should know. We have experts in our parking commissioner, or czar as we used to call him, on the efficacy of it and the operations of it. What has bothered me, and I think bothered most of us, is the lease itself. Underlying this, for our old timers, I'm a little older than Mr. Butel from our district, and I remember when you could look down Greenwich Avenue and see the sound, and all of a sudden this huge, monster, big block of a building got plopped there. So they got the good view and nobody else did. And we found out that this first selectman made a nice deal with his father-in-law on building this building and the lease.
Mr. Von Keiseling, address this motion to postpone indefinitely.
I am, sir. If you had the patience to follow me, you will understand what I'm saying.
Yes, well, Mr. Von Keiseling, we do not make personal attacks on anyone.
I wasn't making a personal, I was stating fact in history, sir.
Sir, that was a personal attack. Address the motion.
So, so much for history in Greenwich. The point being that that lease has always bothered a lot of us as being a very comfortable arrangement. I think many of us, in old time, when this came up again, reacted to that, saying, gee, now we want coming back a little more, times have changed. I think we'd like to see the person, the other person, the builder, give back some too, perhaps. Now, this has nothing to do with what we're talking about in the specific. I would think, I would go along with my district and say postpone it to the next meeting for more information, that would be fine, but to postpone it indefinitely, I think is more of a pyrrhic effort. We do need it, whether it's done, whether it's done this month or done next nine months from now, it's going to be done. The CIP is not duplicatory. It's well demonstrated in its need. The question is, what is that deal that's being cut that Mr. Butel referred to? What is the basis of each person's contribution to it? We're told in our committee that, excuse me, district, that there was worry in the building owner's part for terrorism, that in other words, they could get under the building and blow the building up and things of that nature. I don't know if that's true or not, we were told that. Terror protection, I would think, would be the landlord's problem, not ours. We're talking about the relatively low-level crime. I would support the $18,000, but I would like to have a good, close look at that lease. Thank you.
Further discussion on the District Five motion to postpone indefinitely. Karen Ostimal, District Five, to be followed by David Detchin, District 10, and Karen Fossiliotis, District Seven, Roger Lory, District Seven. What? Okay.
Karen Ostimal, District Five, I have a question regarding the timeline. Was this CIP project created prior to our resolution tonight? And if so, was the lighting that is in our resolution going to be part of this project? And if not, if we don't vote on the item tonight, if we vote it down, will those lights not be put in? Are they not part of this?
All right, your questions are, was the CIP project adopted, proposed before, what? December?
No, before this resolution.
This came to us in December, okay?
Right, so was this project for, is this project for $105,000 not include the lights that we're talking about tonight?
Okay, and...
Or was it all along in this, was it going to be in this anyway?
Mr. Corey?
This project was initiated this summer. The CIP was initiated afterwards. The project was something that was a need that was immediate, so as soon as I identified it, I tried to get it processed, go into the BET and a regular process. That's what took so long. But the CIP was done after, after the project, this project.
So it's not included?
So it's not included, no.
All right, David Detchin, District 10, to be followed by Karen Fossiliotis, District Seven, and Maria Popp, District Four.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. It's my impression that all of the questions that Ms. Ferry's district raised were, in fact, answered adequately by Mr. Croll's report. For that reason, I see no need for postponement. Whatever we think of the lease and whether we like what lease was negotiated back in 1967, to my mind, it's irrelevant to this particular expenditure at this time. I don't think there's anything at all inconsistent with using the same safety concerns for this particular project, which is about a complete lack of lighting in regard to a particular spot that needs to be resolved as quickly as possible, and using the same safety argument in regard to substandard lighting, which is lighting but substandard, that should be corrected at a later time as part of the CIP. To my mind, we've heard enough to know what the project's about. The extraneous discussion of the lease is irrelevant to this $18,000 expenditure, which we're going to spend three-quarters of the night on. And to my mind, I think we ought to reject the motion to postpone. We know enough now to act on this, and let's adopt this $18,000 in order to eliminate this risk of liability.
Karen Fossiliotis, to be followed by Maria Popp.
With all due respect to the previous speakers, what has been described to us tonight is more properly vetted through the CIP process. We have before us a request for $18,000, which is a minimal amount of money in the whole scheme of our whole budget, to improve lighting at the Greenwich Plaza parking lot. It's not a lot of money, as I said, and it sounds like a no-brainer, and it should be. But in my view, the process by which this item was requested is flawed. I keep hearing, in the future, we should do this or that, for this and similar requests that this body has approved. This is a capital improvement. The situation that has been described in this parking lot can be traced back to 1967 or at least to 1974, when I was going to college in New York City and commuting and using that lot. There have been thefts and stolen cars in this facility in the 43 years that this facility has existed. The town has been on notice for 43 years about the safety and security about this parking lot. This is not new news. But this, so as I said, I do not object to improved lighting. I think it's needed there. I think a lot of improvements are needed there. What I do object to is the process by which this was done. This belongs in the capital improvement plan, which the request should go through. It should be properly vetted, all of the questions that we have, which have been answered somewhat tonight, but there probably are more that haven't been answered, should be looked at and reviewed through this process. So in conclusion, really, it's true, this request is only $18,000. It's not a lot of money, but what we need to do is do it right, do it according to the procedures that we've set up, and therefore, I urge you to vote for this to postpone it indefinitely.
Maria Popp, District Four.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM and guests. I guess what we discussed in our district, we came up with the unanimous vote of the members present, that we had sufficient questions to, what we had thought we would do was make a motion to refer this back to legislative enrolls and to town services. But really, that's not the case. We were looking for the information on the lease. We were looking for the capital improvement information. It seems that other people have had that information. We were not privy to that. We also had a question about why there were not sufficient explanations in the Explanos, why this seemed to not go through the particular process where there was money left over from one project, which should just be returned to the general fund and not to be taken and used for another project. We agree, we understand that an $18,000 is not an exorbitant amount, but we do think that it belongs in the capital improvement budget and not in this. I understand that it's, it's dark. It is dark, believe me, I've seen it. But I don't think that's the way to do it, and I'm just speaking on behalf of District Four. Thank you.
All right, well, the, actually, this being, no, I'm going to call for a record vote. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? District Five, motion to postpone Item Four indefinitely. Please understand, if you want to effectively kill this item tonight, you should vote yes. If you want to continue to take this up and vote on the merits, you should vote no on this motion to postpone indefinitely. And I ask the district chairs to please expedite the vote, as we will need to await the results before proceeding. However, while we are awaiting that result, I'd like to invite our First Selectman, Peter Tessie, to address us. Mr. Tessie.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the RTM. Congratulations on your election to this august body. Having served here 10 years, I can tell you, one of the things that was told to me by a former selectman was that serving on the RTM is a lesson in human nature. I did not quite understand what he meant when he told me that back in 1988, but after 10 years, I finally, it sunk into this thick head of mine, and it's, it's a wonderful experience, and I wish you all the best and look forward to serving with you. And congratulations to our moderator, Mr. Byrne, and our moderator, Pro Tem, for their election to continue in those positions. Tonight, I am here to report to you on the status of the committees that were called for in the 2009 Plan of Conservation and Development that was adopted by the predecessor body back in June. Over the last several months, working together with our town planner, Diane Fox, Don Heller, the chairman of the P&amp;Z, Joe Pellegrino, the former RTM Appointments Committee Vice Chair, Leslie Lee, chairman of the Selectmen's Nomination Advisory Committee, and John Wetmore, special counsel, Law Department of the Greenwich Land Use Agencies, we have assembled a group of in excess 60 residents to serve on the respective committees called for in this document. I do want to thank those individuals for participating in this working group to assist me in assembling these committees, as it took several meetings, many meetings, and hours to not only review interested applicants, but to seek those, seek out individuals who have particular expertise or knowledge that would benefit these committees. I will affirm that these committees are advisory, they have no policymaking authority, their role is to further study and address issues that were raised within the POCD and provide reports on a periodic basis to this body through the office of the First Selectman. I am pleased to tell you that out of the 60-plus people, about one-third of them are either present or former RTM members. In the area of the downtown committee, there are approximately 17 people. We are still waiting confirmation of a representative from the Historic District Commission, but I've asked Heidi Smith, who serves as chairman of that committee, the housing committee, which was one of the committees, the only committee that was called for to be adopted by the Board of Selectmen. There are presently 18 confirmed members, and I've asked our former Director of Community Development, Nancy Brown, to chair that committee, given her distinct knowledge over the issues of public housing and the at-risk population here in the town of Greenwich. The implementation committee was put into effect several months ago, and it has met on three occasions. I will be chairing that committee, and one of the primary focuses of that committee to date is to take the 100 or so items, the action items in the document, and provide a status as to where it presently stands. While they were referred to as action items, many of the things that were denoted in that, in that list, have already been in process, and so we've assembled various spreadsheets, and actually Jill Oberlander of District Two has been a focal member of the effort to help assimilate the responses and keep current and be able to report it out through forums such as this and also through the town website. The Parking and Transportation Committee has presently 10 citizens. Paul Settlemeyer, who is from District Two, I've asked to chair that. We know that Paul is not only a member of our Southwestern Regional Planning Agency, he is also its chair, and I can tell you from my working with Paul, he is a wealth of information and knowledge on this and many subject matters. The Town Properties Committee presently has 13 members, and I've asked John Lucarelli from District 10 to chair that. Members of this committee are representative of the Conservation Commission, the P&amp;Z, the Board of Ed, the Wetlands Agency, the RTM Land Use Committee, the Flood and Erosion Control Board, the RTM Parks and Rec Committee, as well as a few citizens at large. Again, please keep in mind that these committees are advisory, and their role is to provide further review and formulation of recommendations for consideration by the governing bodies of our town. They are inclusive, and some of them are quite large. My one directive to them when I convene them for their first meetings is that I fully expect that people remain open to the subject matter. We clearly brought together people of different points of view, as was so noted in the article on the paper last week about the housing committee, but that is the strength of our community. Operating in a vacuum and excluding divergent points of view will accomplish nothing. So in terms of bringing the folks together to focus on a mission and recommendation, my directive is simply this: Come with an open mind, provide your perspective, and together, I think we can forge a consensus to put forward recommendations for policy decision by the other entities of our town government. So that it completes that phase of the POCD. Again, the names we will, we will put up on the website. I have them here tonight. I will disseminate them to the press. There are like some 67, as I counted, and I'm not willing to read them all to you at the present time, but I will let you know that we will be making them available, and many of the folks serving are in your midst. So again, thank you, and I look forward to working with each and every one of you over the next two years. And congratulations to the moderator, for whom I want to take a point of personal privilege to note, I had the distinct honor and pleasure of meeting his daughter, Tina, who has distinguished herself as being selected to attend the United States Naval Academy in Annapolis. She is an extremely bright and accomplished young woman, and candidly, when I met her, I did not make the correlation. I guess didn't pay attention to the name until she put out her hand, and I said, you don't happen to be related to this man, pointing to Tom's picture. She's, that's my dad, so. She was very proud of you as well, Mr. Moderator. But we are so proud of her, and she's going to represent Greenwich very well, and not only Greenwich, but our country, so.
Well, thank you very much, and thank you for all the support you give to our towns youth. Thank you. All right, I believe we now have all the cards, and the vote is being tabulated. Ms. Sodicon, did you get that Massachusetts score?
No.
I've heard a report, but I...
Yeah, round one.
Round one, they're saying. Thank you. All right, the result of the vote on the District Five motion to postpone Item Four indefinitely. Those in favor, 61; opposed, 136; abstaining, 0. That motion has... That motion has failed, so item four remains before us. Any further discussion on item four? Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, item number four, and proceed to poll your delegation? While we are voting, we will take up our last agenda item. That is item number five. Joseph Liano, Director of Parks and Recreation.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator and RTM members. Item five, resolve that the town of Greenwich accept a gift from the Friends of Greenwich Point consisting of replacement signage, benches for Greenwich Point Park. The gift value is thirteen thousand five hundred dollars.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item five has been moved and seconded. May we have the reports on that item, beginning with Gordon Ennis, Chair of our Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, the Finance Committee met last Monday, and presenting the item was Joseph Liano, Lena Stenberg, Stenberg, rather, of the Friends of Greenwich Point, and Kathy Weisenberger from the Board of Parks and Rec was also there. This item was well presented. These folks had clearly anticipated questions that the committee would have and was prepared to answer each one of them. It's always nice to get gifts. It's especially nice when the presentation is so professionally and expertly done. The vote was twelve zero zero. We are pleased to report that this project anticipates a replacement of twenty-five signs with one-half-inch carved thermoplastic made of recycled material. It resists mold, it doesn't bend, even Superman can't break it. It also, the project also includes a message center, double-door message center, so one would have, one door would, would offer a message center for the Friends of Greenwich Point, the other one for general messages. It also includes replacing six benches, two at the Chimes Building, two at the Mansions Site, one near the Yacht Club, and one at the edge of the parking lot near the Foreman's Cottage. Very excellent presentation for the town and a, it's always nice to get a gift, right? So we recommend voting in favor of this item.
Thank you. Karen Sodicon, Chair of our Parks and Recreation Committee.
Good evening again. We had a similar presentation. We had Mr. Sissiano introduced it, and we had Lenia Stenberg and Kathy Weisenberg also present, and we saw a sample of the sign. I only would add that the replacement sign project is going to be done in three phases, and this is the first phase called the information phase. There will be two more phases that will cover traffic and parking, and lastly, the shellfish commission. And there will be new posts of silver metal on which these signs will go. Other than that, I don't think I have anything else to add. The bench replacements are in endeavor to try to have uniform benches throughout, and that's what will be the result of replacing these six. Our vote was twelve zero zero, and I think we're very lucky to have the generous Friends of Greenwich Point donating this and improving Greenwich Point for all of its residents. Thank you.[1527.86][1527.86](APPLAUSE).
Thank you. Any discussion on item five? Will the dis-- Pardon?
I'll play it.
No, we can't. We have to take a record vote. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Item number five. Let's make sure we don't confuse the vote on item number four that may still be in the process, and proceed to poll your delegation on item number five. That being our final agenda item, we will need to await the results of the pending votes before adjourning the meeting. While we are awaiting those votes, I happened to see an article that I would commend to all of you in the Greenwich Magazine, and I assume it's the latest edition, but I'm not sure, and it's an article on the Cos Cob Fire Police. And I, I would recommend, it was an excellent article. It highlights a group that provides a wonderful service, volunteers, all of them, and I recommend An additional word on the preparation of our RTM directory. This is the printed directory, not the online version. As you know, Joan Caldwell has been coordinating that, and Joan wanted to remind all members that you had been asked for contact information, including email addresses, and unless we hear otherwise immediately, the directory will print the email address that you had provided. Since then, we now know there is this town email account. If anybody wants to substitute that account for what they had previously given, I suggest you immediately contact, you can contact me or Joan Caldwell with that. Otherwise, they are going to go to print with the information you had already provided. We have the result of the vote on item number four, which is the eighteen thousand dollars for lighting and in the garage, in the parking garage. Those in favor, one fifty-eight. Opposed, thirty-six. Abstaining, zero. That item has carried. We have one more vote, which we are awaiting the result on, and I will announce that, and We have the result of the vote on item number five, which is the acceptance of a gift valued at thirteen thousand five hundred from Friends of Greenwich Point. Those in favor, one eighty-seven. Ms. Jordan, one eighty-seven?
Yes.
Those in favor, one eighty-seven. Opposed, one abstaining, zero. That item has carried. There being no further business to come before the meeting, an absent objection, this meeting stands adjourned upon unanimous consent. Thank you all for coming. Happy New Year. Congratulations, one and all, and have a safe trip home.